Called to meet your daughter again to catch it on film. I apologize for being late. I had my granddaughter I hadn't bring home. So, I apologize to the candidate. I'm here now. We have a series of questions we're going to ask you. But before we do so, we're going to have Justin explain to the procedures that we're going to go through from this point forward.
Thank you, Henry. First of all, Dr. Morris, thank you so much for coming here today and spending a day visiting with our schools and our staff and our students and our community members. And thank you for participating in our community forum. Before we begin our interview tonight, I just want to update you as well as the public on the process and where we're at right now. First of all, the board has enlisted the assistance of the New England School Development Council, NASDAQ, to assist us in this process. NASDAQ has conducted over 400 searches. Our consultant helping us with this process is Dr. Ken D. Benedictus, and he's worked on about 40 of these searches himself. We started this process in our search for a superintendent by conducting a series of focus groups with community members, staff, and students. The findings were then compiled on a report we posted on our website. The school board then created a superintendent screening committee which used these findings to select candidates for our first round of interviews. This committee interviewed every -- this committee, excuse me, reviewed every resume and cover letter received by NASDAQ for this position, and the committee selected a series of candidates to interview, and from these interviews has selected three candidates to move forward to the board. This is our second interview we're having tonight. On Thursday tomorrow, the board will be meeting to discuss the interviews, to discuss -- excuse me, a non-public session will be meeting to discuss the interviews, to discuss the feedback we've received from the community, to discuss references, and determine an appropriate next step, which may include electing a superintendent. It may include site visits. It may include additional interviews. We don't know until we've had that meeting. So that will be happening tomorrow. So hopefully, we'll have an update on that process for everybody on Friday. So, we are going to take you through a series of, I think it's about 13 questions. We have about an hour. I'll let you know when you hit the halfway point. We'd like to ask you every question, and I'm going to go ahead and begin and ask you why you're asking for -- why you are, excuse me, interviewing for this position and what strengths and experiences you can bring to our district.
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to interview tonight. It's a real honor to be invited into an interview with your school system, and I truly enjoyed my visit in all of the schools today. Very impressive staff, parents, very welcoming. So, thank you for bringing me in. So, my experience is pretty diverse. I have been a central office administrator for 25 years, superintendent for 22 of those 25, three as assistant superintendent. I have worked in Maine's smallest school systems. I've worked in Maine's medium-sized school system, and I've worked in Maine's largest school system. I have had a very successful career as a superintendent in Maine. I have enjoyed every year that I have been in public education, which quite honestly should never have happened in the first place. It was just an accident of youth that I ended up teaching. I happened to have a very young family when I was in college, and when I graduated with an art degree, I didn't know how I was going to feed them. So, I went an extra semester, got my teaching degree, and started teaching in Unity, Maine, where I still have a home, and fell in love with public education, fell in love with the kids and the staff, and really felt that it was a place where I belonged. So, from a profession to an avocation, it just really felt right to me. Seven years into teaching art, I had taught K through 12 at that point. I decided that I'd like to be a school administrator. I was an elementary school administrator. I've been a junior, senior high school administrator, and as I said earlier, an assistant superintendent and superintendent. I've had a wonderful career, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. So, what brought me to this position is I am in a place in my life where I can look beyond Maine. I began looking through select districts, up and down the East Coast, as a matter of fact. You guys happen to be on the early side of the interview process. And so, when you invited me down for an interview, I thought, yay, that felt good, because it was the first time outside of Maine. And my day-to-day just validated that being a candidate here is pretty exciting. You have some really nice things going on. You know, every school bragged, as they should, and every school had serious questions of me with no exception. And so, it's just been a really great day, and so, those experiences, I think, bring me here tonight, and I hope that they turn out to be experiences that are valuable to you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
How do you define student success? What are the key skills, experiences, and beliefs with which every student should graduate high school, keeping in the wide range -- keeping in mind the wide range of student abilities?
Yep. I firmly believe that every child comes to school with gifts. You know, there's a model out there called John Hopkins Gifted School Model where they believe that every child comes to school with a gift, and we can build off those gifts. Think the simple black and white answer is too pat, and that would be the NCLB data. We test kids in reading, we test kids in math, and based on that, we decide whether we're successful or not. I think real life is far more complicated than that, and if we think about ourselves as adults, we don't stop and have English time, we don't stop and have math time, we don't stop and have social studies time, we don't stop and have art time. Every part of our life as adults is integrated. Yet, as we teach youngsters in public education, we begin this segmentation of skill sets. And so, I think that when we measure student success, it's not just an issue of math and science scores, it's an issue of graduation rates, college placement rates. It's an issue of whether we're providing them a well-rounded arts education as well as English, science, and math and social studies. I think it's 21st century skills. It's about collaborative work, teaching youngsters that we do work in groups. You're a good example of that. I mean, you're not working in isolation, you're working as a body. You have to learn how to build off each other's strengths and have debates where you end up with a product at the end. You're not isolated from each other when you're making those decisions. That's real life, and those are the kind of skill sets that we should be expecting of graduates of Oyster River High School without a doubt. So, 21st century skills and basic skill sets where they know how to read, write, compute are essential, and the arts are an important piece of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Next.
Yes.
Please share what processes have been defined in your district to bridge the current curriculum frameworks to roll -- to the rollout and implementation of the Common Core state standards?
In Portland, we're just beginning to do that work. In Mezzalonsky, we were well into that work. And in fact, the work that we did, and so I'll use Mezzalonsky as the example as opposed to Portland because it was a much more complete experience. When I was at Mezzalonsky, we built a aligned curriculum, pretty critical if you're going to assess whether students are achieving or not. And we also built a system where teachers were collaborating, and we, at that point, were using Maine learning results. Now, they've taken that work that we did and started working toward a standards-based system. The standards-based system is really a system where you have very clear expectations for every graduate. It's no longer about collecting credits, it's about demonstrating your proficiency in the various academic areas and non-academic areas. So, for Mezzalonsky, that was a 12-year experience. That's where they are today. In Portland, much different. Portland didn't have any aligned curriculum when I got there. Their finances were really horrific in terms of having gone through a meltdown financially, overspending their budget, losing the faith of the community, and those kinds of issues. So, the curriculum piece in Portland is about 18 months old. So, they're at the beginning stages of building the aligned curriculum and the common expectations related to Common Core, and beginning to have the discussion around standards-based education. So, I would give you both of those examples. One was mature, and one is at the beginning stages.
Cody?
Should I do my question, or?
Is it your question?
It's your question.
What's your question, Henry?
Excuse me?
Why don't I ask the question?
Okay, go ahead.
It's just a question about strategic planning. Can you discuss your experience in helping a district formulate and execute a strategic plan?
Yep. And again, I can give you three examples, one from each of the school systems. Comes under the heading of, "I wish I was as smart 25 years ago as I feel like I am today." When we built the comprehensive plan in Portland, I really felt like we were pushing the state-of-the-art envelope. Most strategic plans become shopping lists, and I'm sure that most of you have experienced this shopping list strategic plan. We need more microscopes, we need more staff, we need more things. And the disheartening part of strategic plans built that way is the board that builds them and the administration that builds them. In that first year or so, it feels vital, it feels real. You go through the second year, it's less vital, less real. By the third year, it's sitting on a shelf. 10 years later, somebody says, "Hey, let's build a strategic plan," and you go through that cycle all over again. In this case, the Portland example is the better example. We built a comprehensive plan framework while we were rectifying management issues in terms of finance, and we brought together -- well, first, we brought together over 100 people in Portland to talk about what we wanted for our school system. So, we did a visioning exercise called Future Search, and we brought in all the expected players, the political leaders, selectmen, and so forth. We also brought in the unexpected players, students. We brought in homeless. We brought in leaders from the multicultural community. We brought in religious leaders. So, there's 100 people who are recognized in some role, informal or formal, in establishing a vision of what we would want to do in the Portland school system. That process starts with who we were. In other words, what's the history? Because in order to go forward, you have to have an understanding of the context. The next part of that process is who we are. Where are we today? What are -- what's going on in the system? And the most important part, and the part that you spend the most time in, is who do you want to be? And those three questions became the formation of ultimately the board adopting a comprehensive framework in November. And I'm very excited by it because what it did was articulated the vision, the mission, the key principles, the strategies. But here's the key that I wish I was as smart 25 years ago as I feel like I am today. It's not done. We deliberately left it undone so that the staff could then be engaged in what we would be doing around literacy, building by building in the district, what we would be doing in technology, building by building. Because each staff, and you -- and I learned this today, and it's no surprise, each building has its own DNA. Each building has its own feel. And if you go, as you went through, as I went through the buildings today, and if you went through the same buildings in a one-day period, you would feel the high school has a different feel than the middle school, the middle school has a different feel than the elementary. Both elementary schools feel completely different from each other. But it doesn't mean that they can't be glued to common goals and common expectations. And that's really the beauty of the common framework that we passed in November with the school board. And I would tell you that I went building to building, 18 buildings, from Cliff Island, 10 miles out in the Atlantic Ocean, to our largest high schools. And I would share with them what we were doing. And when I shared with them the idea of leaving it unfinished to gather their voice, the teachers got excited about it, the administrators got excited about it, the community was excited about it. So, that's why I say I wish I was as smart 25 years ago as I was, you know, this past November. That was 18 months of engaging leaders. We went from 100 leaders down to 10, and we had some really key players in the community around the table. And their role wasn't to develop the strategic plan, their role was to critique our ideas. So, they became what we called critical friends. So, it's a process that I honestly believe I should go out and copyright because it was that good, you know? And it was so different than what I was used to in my career, which is probably mostly what y'all have done, which is do the strategic plan, and you get it on paper, and yay, we have a strategic plan, and everybody feels good for the moment. For Portland, I firmly believe that what we did will last them 20 years because it has to be renewed annually at the building level, it has to be renewed annually at the central office level. And the metrics, the metrics were, again, one of the beautiful things in this, is we created a metric where our highest poverty school's growth was measured against itself. We had a -- we have a couple of schools in Portland where poverty is 80%, and we have a couple of schools in Portland where poverty is only 17%. They would look more like your elementary schools. Well, you can't measure those schools against each other because inherently that's unfair. But you can measure them against themselves, and that's the metric we established for district measurement of growth. So, each school has a baseline, and each school will be accountable to that baseline. And the idea is we would see 15% growth in the number of youngsters who meet proficiency from the group that did not meet proficiency the previous year, and so it's longitudinal as well. Very exciting. I think it's a really great product, it's something that I'm very, very proud of, and I know will serve Portland for a long time into the future.
How have you worked through conflict resolution when there's disagreement?
Conflict resolution, first thing is don't lose your temper. You know, that's one of the sins of the past. You know, we use the bully pulpit, we bellow, blah, blah, blah. I never have done that, it's not my style. Identify what the issue is. You know, the issue is fundamental. You may find that the issue is not in disagreement, it's the solution that's in disagreement. Well, then, find common ground. You know, it's -- if you go through life saying it's a win-lose, then somebody's going to be angry and somebody's going to be happy. More often than not, you can get to most issues through a win-win. What do you need in order to accomplish this? What can we bring to the table in order to accomplish this? And let's hit the common ground rather than getting into a battle over issues. Doesn't mean that you can't at some point have to take a position of a win-lose, but it shouldn't be the expected process. It should be, how do we meet everybody's needs and move the agenda? And for me, the agenda is always about student performance. How do we improve student performance? How do we work together to make that happen? As long as you're using the "we" word, then conflict resolution is relatively easy. You start using the "I" word, and then it becomes adversarial.
Jim?
Portland is a -- I really like the city. Just for your information, there's a train that stops in this town and takes you right up to the railroad station to catch your bus down to the Port area. It's a fun ride. Having said that, I appreciate the diversity and the fiscal responsibilities that confront you in a city of that size. Could you share with us the methodology or the means with which you would develop a budget for the school district?
Sure. It actually truly hasn't changed since my first superintendency in Limestone. First step in any budget process for me is getting guidance from elected officials. I know, I know that recently your goal was a flat budget. I need to know that on the front end. If it's a flat budget, we define what that means so that there's no misunderstanding as we go forward. What I used to do at Mezzalonsky is I'd visit every selectman's office. How much pain can you bear? And, you know, initially, when I did that in Mezzalonsky, I had one town says, "Zero, can't take any, can't take any of it." And I said, "Well, you know, zero really isn't appropriate," because we know budgets will move because of inflation, valuation increases, and so forth. So, the other two towns, much more into it, said, "Well, we think we can do this because we have this project on the town side and this project on the town side, and if you did this, then I think we can work together and get a budget through." When the third town saw that was the style I was using, they then became engaged in the process because I'd bring them together, I'd meet individually, then I'd bring them together. Then I would set a goal with the school board. Based on that information, I would share it out. I would write the goal up on dry erase board is what it was at the time. And so, every budget meeting, there was no misunderstanding, there was no confusion. We've all agreed that that's what we're -- that's the number we're trying to hit. And then, I would collect the information from staff, and staff will always ask for more than what you can afford. And Portland, right now, my first draft of the budget was $99.7 million. That's a 10% increase for Portland. Portland cannot handle a 10% increase, no matter how wealthy you think you are. And in Portland, the diversity of wealth is pretty extreme. So, I know 10% is too much. I go back to the finance committee and saying, you know, "I'm struggling with this 10%. I know it's unaffordable, but I also know we have these fixed costs," and I lay them out there. You know, "Staff's going to cost us X, health is going to cost us Y, we have these requests from the buildings, and so, the first draft of this budget's $99.7 million." Go back out to the administrators and say, clearly, we have, you know, an unsustainable budget recommendation from you all, and ultimately, I have to translate that into a recommendation from me. So, I tell them, this is what I think the traffic will bear, and then we start pairing a budget back. So, yesterday, it was a pretty good day. I cut $2 million out of the proposed budget. I have three weeks to get it to the board, and then they'll take it from where they will. So, it's a, it's a, it's both a collaborative process and also a process that says ultimately I've got to have a budget that goes, that says superintendent's recommended budget. So, in the end, it has to be what I put in front of the board. So, lots of input from lots of people, ultimately ending up in a place where I hand it off to the school board, clear, clearly, hopefully, meeting the mark that we've established together, and the school board deliberates. Your job at that point is to say, "Yeah, superintendent, you've done a great job." Unlikely, you'll say, probably a pretty good job, because there's always going to be the board that wants to put in their influence on the proposed budget. That's your job. So, you look at my proposed budget, you make the changes you think are palatable or will work with the electorate, and that's what ultimately gets sent out to the voters. So, for me, it starts with gathering information, and it ends with the voter saying yes or no.
Thank you. Megan?
Explain how you use data to make decisions.
Yeah, it's an interesting, it's an interesting question for me because people perceive my art background as somebody who isn't data-driven. I would say that my art background makes the data I look at more real, more meaningful. And the way, the reason I say that is the, when I'm looking at a bunch of numbers, I'm not an analyst. I'm looking at those from the perspective of, there's a staff member that's delivering a program, there's a student that's receiving a missed service. So, data is important to me, but it doesn't drive me. Lack of data would drive me nuts. I need that data reference point in order to say to you or the community, "We're doing a great job." For example, the high school shared with me today that they had no dropouts in this past year. We should be singing that from the praises, praising the high school and singing that from the highest rooftop in town, "Zero dropouts." Now, that may not excite people globally across the town, but it excites me because I've never seen a high school with over 600 students have no one drop out. That's an amazing piece of data. So, there's where I get excited about data. I'm not excited about data that is dry and doesn't have meaning. So, when we're trying to, for example, come to a budget conclusion, we have to recognize that if we move this number, it has an impact on program or student. And I think that as an educator, that's the most important part of the data-driven decision-making that I make, is to always tie that decision to a program or youngster. Now, it doesn't mean that in the end you will not, or I won't make a recommendation to cut something because the data may actually say, "This is a program that you no longer, that's no longer healthy, the kids aren't showing up for it, it's under-resourced, and it's not sustainable." Well, that's really what I've done in Portland for three years. In that sense, we looked at the data, we saw teachers who were teaching one, two, three, four periods out of an eight-period day. That's just not a sustainable model. The people in Portland were expecting, from their living room when they passed the budget, that everybody was doing a six-period teaching day. First day that I met with 1,200 employees at the exposition building in Portland, I said, "All of our teachers need to be teaching six periods at the high school." The K-through-eight staff erupted in applause. Guess we didn't. So, data informs me, and it helps me make decisions, but I also want to make sure they're not lost in the numbers, that I realize that those numbers have a real importance to somebody. And then, the ultimate judgment is, is it a benefit to youngsters? And if it is, I'll support it to you. If it's not, I would be the first person to say, "I don't think it's a sustainable program." Now, even having said that, we also, and you all know this, have the reality of the constituency we serve. So, you know, I cut a cooperative program last year from Portland High School, and during high school, I had 15 students each. I expect that our teachers will be teaching between 90 and 110 kids. So, 15 students was a far cry from 90. That was happening in the first year I was there, so I gave it the benefit of the doubt, and I worked with the principal and I worked with the staff member. But by the third budget I'm proposing, it's still at 15 kids. That's not a sustainable program. So, I recommended it be cut from the high school, and it was. Conversely, we had a human sexuality course in Portland, Family Living, and it had incredible political backing. And even though the numbers didn't warrant the sustaining of the program, the community desperately wanted that program to be. And so, it still exists today because, as you know, it's not a science, it's an art when you're trying to communicate effectively with the community on what they want from the school system. We really don't live in isolation as a school board and superintendent. We have to be out in that community getting feedback on these decisions, and sometimes the community will say, "We get that," and sometimes the community's going to say, "Whoa." You know, that's sacred, that's sacred to us. We don't want to lose it. And so, it's, so all that data ultimately ends up in decisions, but those decisions aren't done in a vacuum, they're done in a relationship to the communities that we serve.
Megan?
All right. Describe for us your management style and working with others. How do you help focus goals into action plans?
My management style will range from, "I'm responsible for this decision," to, "We're responsible for this decision." I do believe that great ideas can come from staff, but I also believe that great ideas can come from superintendent. So, I think that once you recognize that you're open to new ideas and you measure those ideas against what you're hoping to achieve for youngsters, it really doesn't make any difference whether that idea comes from the superintendent's office or from a custodian. You know, I'm serious about that. I've had really great custodians over the years. "Have you ever thought about ...?" And they'll throw out this idea, and I'll say, "You know, I really haven't thought about that, and thanks for sharing it," and carry it away into an implementation strategy that made sense for the system. But, you know, one of the things we do in public education, I probably should speak more to the microphone, one of the things that we do in public education is we think hierarchically, you know, the superintendent, the principals, the teachers, and the support staff. You've got some people working for you, I guarantee you, who are not teachers or administrators and who are not the superintendent, who see things from the ground, who can inform you in a way that you would be amazed by simply asking what you see. So, in the budget process, I actually have a kind of a drop box, electronic drop box, where people could put in their ideas and throw out anything they wanted in the drop box for me to look at. I look at them all, and, you know, I wouldn't say more often than not, I would say less often than not, there are really great ideas because the ideas that are often submitted have already been vetted, and, you know, a person wouldn't know that. But, boy, there's treasures every once in a while that comes out of that. And so, respecting all employees for what they can contribute to the system makes a better system.
Pretty good. Cody?
What has student involvement in decision-making looked like at your previous schools, and how do you incorporate student input at Oyster River?
Sure. I instituted the first student rep in Limestone when I was superintendent. In Portland, we have three. So, it's three high schools, three student reps. So, that's a formal structure. In Mezzalonsky, we had one. So, in two of the three districts, I started it. In Portland, I inherited it. I think it's a great model. I think your voice here helps grownups, myself included, understand a student perspective. Doesn't mean you're a representative of all the students because you couldn't be any more than, you know, "I represent all the towns." But it does give us a sense of what's, how students see the world. And I think it's an important voice. In terms of, you know, students' engagement and decision-making, I've never been shy about going to the students and talking through ideas. And I do remember one time I went to the students, and I was senior class, and we're having this discussion, and I said at the end of the meeting, probably 45 minutes because superintendents can talk, "So, what questions do you have, guys?" A young lady raises her hand, I said, "Yeah." She said, "Dr. Morris, I just have one question. Why are you wearing two different shoes?" And so, you know, from that, it's like, "Yeah." I looked down, and I said, "I was just wondering whether you guys would notice." "Yeah, right." And so, you know, it's the interaction with students is invaluable, and they really do have great ideas. That happens to be a cute story that I will treasure forever because I, indeed, put my shoes on in the dark and had put two mismatched shoes on, didn't notice it until the senior noticed it for me. But, yeah, kids have great ideas. You know, and even at the elementary level, I mean, we tend to dismiss the student voice because they're not grownups. But a youngster can offer some great insights into how school is going for them. It happens every day at home, and yet, we tend to negate it in the professional sense. You know, "Well, that's a student." Well, you know what? They're the recipients of what we're doing, and they can tell you whether it's working for them or not. So, I think it's an important part. We just did a couple of student surveys last year to just get a sense of how things were going.
Krista?
What is your approach to professional development? How do you assess teachers, and what mentoring strategies have you had success with?
Thanks, that's a great question. So, it's three parts. I should probably write them down, but we'll see if I can read them.
You want me to say it again slowly?
No, no, I got it. We have a great mentoring program in Portland. We have a teacher leader who's been released. She is truly amazing, and she's, without her, the central office would have been a complete dysfunction three years ago. She's the kind of teacher leader who stepped up to the plate and has done work way beyond who stepped up to the plate and has done work way beyond what people expected of her. So mentoring, we have a very rich mentoring program in Portland. Terms of evaluation, I'm really pleased to share with you that we are on the cutting edge of putting together an evaluation instrument with our staff that really will be a model for New England, if not the country. We've been working very closely with our teachers' association and the Teacher Union Reform Network, which is a group of teachers nationally who have formed a cohort around teacher reform and accountability. And what we're doing in Portland is we're actually creating an evaluation instrument that's just a couple of months away from being aired publicly with the board, where the teachers and the administrators both, we have a teacher and administrative union, so we have separate unions, but they're all unionized, have agreed to student data being part of the evaluation process. It's going to count about 50% of the evaluation. The other two elements are teacher professional development and the contribution the teacher makes beyond the classroom. So I firmly believe that every teacher should be engaged in improving the system, not just hired to teach math or science or art, but to be part of the collective that makes the system better. And so that's the philosophy behind this, and I'm really excited by it. We've been working on that for about 18 months with our teachers. The teachers' union have been completely supportive, the principals' union has been completely supportive. So the amazing thing that I discovered in Portland was that by reputation, it's, the teachers' union is the most powerful in the state, and by action, they are also the, more than willing to sit with me and administrators and problem solvers. So it's gone a long way toward transforming our entire teacher contract. Last year, we closed a three-year deal where the teachers actually took 0% in the first year, and, God bless, and added five extra days to their work year, same time. We changed the language so it was student-centered in their contract, so it wasn't about what adults needed, it was about what students needed. So in many ways, that contract was transformative in terms of how teachers began viewing themselves. In that contract, we identified, the last part of her question, was the professional development that the system needed. So up to this contract, it was kind of like the Wild West, teachers would take whatever they wanted to take that they were interested in, and the system would pay for that course. And in this contract, what we said was, you know, we have real needs, and our teachers knowing more about how to teach children in poverty, we have real needs for our teachers to know how to teach English language learners, we have real needs in our teachers learning skillsets and technology. We had five areas we identified. Teachers were 100% on board. We just started three of those courses this semester for our teachers, taught by our teachers. We have a waiting list. So when you hit the right chord with unions, they're willing to work with you. It's when you get into that win-lose situation that you end up in an adversarial role. So I think I hit all three of the parts of her question.
Do you want to read answers?
Yes, I will. How would you take our district, a great district, and make it even greater in the face of declining enrollment, increasing community demand for enhanced programming, and limited resources?
Well, I do think you have a great district, but I also would share with you that I've never been in a district that hasn't been able to improve from wherever they were. In some districts like Portland, the improvements were dramatic and fast because they were in a different place than you are. Meszulansky was closer to where you are, and we were able to identify through data and through community forums what the, what the interest was of the community to move forward. I would tell you that identifying changes in a system is, is a balancing act between what you see that the data tells you and what you are able to communicate to, to your towns. The, you all have faced that as a school board. If you get out ahead of your towns without communicating effectively with them, you'll get the pushback. If you are out there communicating with them and it's based on observation and fact, they'll be supportive most of the time. There are times when they, they won't be because it might be one of those political sticky wickets that just is too precious to let go. But most of the time, I've found that open, honest communication, goal-setting, based on data, works. What I would bring to Oyster River, which I think is maybe implied in that question, is the experience of creating common vision, common mission, common direction. That's been my skillset in three different districts. I think that that's a skillset that I can bring that would serve you well. Did I miss any part of that question?
I think the piece about limited resources and wanting enhanced programming.
Yeah, limited resources. Quite honestly, that's happening across the country. That's not unique to you. I think, you know, the last time we saw unlimited resources was the 90s, when the economy was really putting out on all eight cylinders. There was money flowing from Washington, I don't know if there was money flowing from Concord, but there was money flowing from Augusta. We were in pretty good shape in the 90s, and if you needed a new program, you just would buy a body. That's not the case. I think everybody's been shocked and dismayed by how long this recession has lasted. And so it's forced elected officials like yourself, select people and counselors to sit back and say, can you demonstrate to us that this expenditure is, is going to contribute to improved student performance? How are you going to measure the, that budget against outcomes? And so that's the dynamic that's changed, certainly across Maine and I believe across the country, where school boards are saying, you know, show us that this is really the best way to spend our resources. And so I think that's the dynamic you face probably for the first time, based on what I heard from questions today, that, that you all are asking the tough question. Is this value-added? Is this the right expenditure at the right time? Is this the place where we're getting the maximum advantage for our youngsters? Those have to be asked, you know, as much as it's a difficult conversation, you have to ask those conversations, you have to have that conversation today. And it doesn't mean that you don't support education, just means that what you're saying to, to the staff, to the superintendent is, is this the best use of our funds? And if it's not, let's not spend it here, let's spend it where we can get the best, the maximum advantage of those funds. So that's the tough conversation. And again, in three school systems, in Limestone, the system lost Loring Air Force Base. You talk about tough conversations, it would be like you all losing University of New Hampshire. If they all left tomorrow, what would be left of your school system? That's what happened in Northern Maine when I was superintendent. The Air Force Base left, what was left of the school system? That's when we got creative and we created the Maine School of Science and Mathematics, a residential high school. And people said, nobody would go to Northern Maine from Southern Maine. What we learned was, the greatest number of students in Maine who went to Limestone to go to school and sleep and eat there for 180 days came from Southern Maine because there was a need. And so in, in some of this work, it's asking kind of crazy questions, you know? What if we didn't do it this way? What if we did this? I know that in the previous conversation with the school board and, and some members of the staff and, and public today, the idea of how would we recruit students? You know, that's, that's part of the equation in, in the tough economy. So I hope that does it.
Yes.
I just want to give an update on time. We're a little over halfway through, but we're doing great. We only have two more questions, and then we'll see if you have some questions for us.
We'll get you right back on time.
How have you reached out? And how will you reach out to the community to welcome participation? And how will you leverage the vast community resources, including our residents, business, and UNH?
Sure. Probably the way I did it in Portland. I mean, Portland was 18 schools. I met with every PTO. I actually met with every PTO before I even started full-time. I used vacation time in Meszulansky to get around in Portland and meet with interested parties for three months before I started the job. I don't know if I have that kind of vacation time to do it for you, if that, if you offered me the job, but that's what I did prior to getting into Portland. So when I hit Portland on July 1st, because they were in crisis, I knew that I needed to act fast. And so I invested a lot of personal time in, in making that transition. Business community, the chamber, I just did a presentation to the chamber last week. They were thrilled because what I have been able to do that isn't public is, I won't name the, the source, but we generated the largest grant in the history of Portland Public Schools over the next three years. It's multimillion-dollar grant. So, so I was engaging the business community on how they could partner with us and, and that work. Reaching out to social agencies, United Way, service agencies, because the other thing that I believe is, we're at a time when school systems can't do it all, that there are support services out there that we should be tapping into. There are like-minded organizations who have very similar missions in terms of servicing kids. We should be reaching out to them. Did all of that in Portland. I did all of that in Meszulansky, and I did that in Limestone. You know, rural Maine doesn't have as many resources as Portland, but you still have to reach out. The partnership piece of running a school system is, is really important. It also builds goodwill with the business community and the social agencies. When you reach out to them, it was a really big deal in Portland because Portland had never reached out effectively. And so that's how I would do it.
Last question.
I appreciate you sharing with us, what educational model or models or instructional practices that you think would best benefit the Oyster River School District?
Really hard question because I don't know the Oyster River School District in a intimate way, so I'll have to answer it in probably a more generic way. I apologize for that upfront.
That's right.
Things that I believe in, that I'm very clear about with staff, I believe that literacy is the foundation for everything we do. So we put all, in my career, I've put as much resource at the behest of students related to literacy to try to have them be proficient by the end of grade three in reading and writing. Why? The research is unequivocal. Youngsters who can read successfully by the end of third grade are less likely to drop out of high school and more likely to attend college. It sounds bizarre that that's where the key, key point is. The research is, you just can't debate it, it's there. So in every system I've worked in, literacy became the foundation for the work we did. You know, you have the expression, well, we just can't add one more thing to the plate. For me, literacy is the plate. So we're not adding anything to it. This is what we should be doing. So literacy is a strong foundation. I wish I could say it was art, but it isn't. It's literacy, that's our society. In terms of teaching practices, staff that have multiple skills, you know, to be able to deliver the program, in Portland, we started expanding our teaching staff so they would have English language learner endorsement. In terms of belief system, I believe the more rigorous the program, the better. And this is what I've learned. In the 70s, we dumbed down curriculum. I was a recipient of a dumbed-down curriculum and thus dropped out. The idea behind rigor is, if you raise the standards, the kids will raise to that level. It doesn't increase dropout rates. It increased interest in what's going on in the classroom. I think relationships are critical. Every youngster deserves some adult who just thinks they're the cat's meow and will advocate for them endlessly. That happened to me in my senior year. When I went back to school, I had an English teacher who took me under her wing, and as a result, I'm here tonight. So relationships are critical. And so then the last piece for me is relevance. So it's the three Rs. It's making the work that we're asking kids to do have meaning. Because, you know, asking kids to do drill-and-kill sheets is boring to you as an adult. Well, guess what? It's pretty much boring to kids as well. So how do we turn the corner so we can make the work they're doing have meaning? So I'll turn to Dennis. I think he's still in the audience. Today, I learned all about their maple tapping event. Okay? Well, you know, what that does is excite kids, and as a result, they're excited about the science they're learning, and they will never forget that experience. So bringing that kind of excitement into the classroom, that kind of meaning into the classroom, that kind of relevance into the classroom. So those three Rs are pretty foundational to me. Literacy is very foundational to me. And providing staff the skillset to do differentiated instruction is critical. So those would be the things I put out there. I think they would apply to Oyster River just as well as they applied to Portland, Oakland, and Limestone, Maine.
Thank you. We have some time left. We'd like you, do you want to ask us any questions?
Great. Thank you. Again, thank you for the opportunity. What I would like to know from the board is, what do you think the most important issue that you would, what would you think that the new superintendent has as the most important issue from the school board's perspective to deal with?
I don't mind. I think one of the most important, in my mind, one of the most important things will be getting a strategic plan, having that unified vision, knowing that our district is working together, finding that common ground to, to take it from great to even better, and helping really in that plan identify clearly the, the outcomes we want to have for children to succeed in this new framework that we're living in today.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I agree, absolutely. And I think the first step of that process, just backing up, would be listening. And I think that, that you would find, if you joined us, that we have a really passionate community, we have passionate staff. We're, we're full of passion, and we all love to talk about kids, our kids, the kids in the community, and it's a really wonderful thing. We'll have community events, or Dr. Thompson came recently to speak to the district, and, you know, it was packed. People come out to talk about their kids, to learn more about their kids. And, you know, it was full of teachers and staff members and parents, and it's just really amazing. So I think that if, if you came here, the first thing to do would be to, you know, capture all of that information and, and meet with different groups because, you know, you'll find that we all like to talk a lot about the kids in our community, and I think that's great.
I learned a little bit of that today.
Okay.
Next question, please.
I also agree. I think that the strategic plan would help us with a lot of the issues that we're currently facing, whether they be budgetary or staffing or whatever. I think that as a board member, that would help guide me immensely. We, we don't have a strategic plan, we don't have anything, we have a vision statement, we have a mission statement, we have an educational philosophy. So we've started the process, but it took us 18 months to get to where we are. And I think we need someone to come in and help us build upon that and get us to a full-blown strategic plan so that year after year, we have, the board has a little bit of guidance as to where we're going with this whole process. And I think that would help make our decisions a lot easier.
Next question.
So what do you think the, this may already been answered in the last question, the greatest challenge you face as a school board or as a district?
Everybody? I think reaching out to all the different groups in the cities. And we have three towns that make up the community and the school community. And there's a generational change that's happening. The board's different than the past boards, and we all love our kids and everything that, that we want to do is for the kids. But, so there's some, I guess, understanding the communities better. And so we're working with them. Yes?
I think where we probably need the most help is to have a leader who can create a framework for constructive and respectful dialogue. And, you know, that's easier said than done. But, you know, I think that many in the community are looking for that kind of person to stand up and create this format where we can talk about our passions respectfully and come to some sort of agreement or acceptance and, and move on and really work together. But without that civility, you know, it's very hard to accomplish anything, and it's easy to get distracted from the focus, which should be kids. So I would look for a leader to create that environment. Of course, you have to have willing participants, and I think you would find you would, but we still need that kind of environment to have good constructive conversations together.
Yes, Jim?
I know that Portland is a tremendously diverse city, and it's one of the beauties of it. However, things that are not readily apparent is that this area too is somewhat diverse. We've got farmers, we've got working farms here, we've got mechanics, plumbers, carpenters, tradespeople, hard-working people. You have elderly folks that are on retirement, as well as a very vocal and eloquent group of people from the university and from the educational establishment. How would you propose, I mean, when you see that, that's kind of asking another question, so please forgive me.
That's right.
But how do you pull that diversity together and get everybody at least talking to one another rather than just shouting at one another?
Yeah, you know, I've been, again, sort of blessed in my career because I would go into meetings that I felt would be controversial around budget or around visioning or what have you. And my style is non-confrontational, it's engaging. You know, somebody barks at me, I just say thanks and move on to the next person. I don't bark back. I think that that invites people to talk as opposed to bellow. So I think the way that I work with people is pretty effective. So I think the way that I work with people is pretty effective. I haven't had an experience where, in Portland in three years with all the controversial decisions we've made, I haven't had anybody show up and, and bellow at the superintendent. It's been, you know, more along the lines of that civil discord, not that it necessarily was quiet civil discord. It could be quite loud, but it wasn't personal. It was, you know, this decision doesn't make sense because, and why are we going down this road as opposed to another road? You know, being challenged is really healthy. It's a democratic process. The only time that I ever had anybody go down the path of being rather aggressive was a motorcycle guy who came in, who was a parent, stereotypical motorcycle guy. And he came into my office and he laid into me and I said, so you ride motorcycle? Which, you know, was completely off-topic to what he wanted to talk about. And I said, so do I. I said, did you see the bike out in the drive? He said, yeah. I said, that's mine, you want to go and check it out? And as we were checking out the bike, he finished his conversation about his frustration. And so part of, of dealing with people is hearing them. And, you know, when you have somebody who's upset, they're upset for a reason, it's not personal. If you engage it on a personal level, it devolves instead of evolves. So it's a style that you use with people that's genuine. I'm not a hollerer, I'm generally not defensive. And so when you use that kind of style with people, they tend to respond in kind.
Yes. We're all set. Do you have any more questions?
Yeah, I just want to, again, thank you for the opportunity to interview. It's been fun, it's been a great day. All four buildings were a great, a great time. The staff who showed up, the parents who showed up, was, it was just a lot of fun. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.